Good evening. Let's get this off to our Lake Town Hall here. So, one, thank you for coming. We've got a lot of people in attendance. Just a quick, we're gonna try and give an update of projects that we've got going on. We've communicated on docks and things of that nature. There's been a lot of questions as to why? Why now? Why is this happening? Things of that nature. We have members from our Lake Committee here, and we have some board members here as well. But we'll kind of give an overview of kind of the status on some of the projects, what we're doing, why we're doing it. And then, really, the majority of this meeting is to get some input questions that you guys have from the membership. We're doing a follow-up from our August board meeting where we had some member comments during that session about the lake. And then, follow-up conversations after that was, hey, it would be nice if we did a, if we did a Lake Town Hall. And, one, thank you for showing up on short notice. If you haven't noticed, it's almost fall. It is fall, I see them pulled down there, and it's starting to get a little cool out for middle of September. But we're trying to get information out to the members as quickly as we get the information as we work with Eagle and some of the other states, state areas that have actually come and visited us at the same time. So, sound like a plan?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So, we have, I'll do some quick introductions here. So, we have on the Lake Committee, we have Val.
Hi.
We have Richard. Andy Cook. Jim Buchanan, he's our chairperson. Jeff Hopkins from Park Inspector, and Larry Monger. I think we might have some hiding in the, couple hiding in the audience as well. Lake Committee tries to meet every two weeks this season, and we have regular, we had regular meetings, and discuss our projects. Scott Wining from the board, Kelly Johnson from the board. I see a couple of board members hiding out in the audience as well. So, really, this is your guys' time. We want to give you some quick updates, and then you guys ask questions. Give us some ideas as to what you see as far as the condition of the lake. We'll highlight some of the projects. If we're missing any projects, concerns that you guys see, because we're gonna take this information, we have a work session meeting with, with the board next Monday. We're gonna have a conversation with the board, and then we gotta, we gotta develop a plan during the off-season as to what are we gonna do for projects in the off-season. And we've always communicated the lake is our number-one asset, so these projects are very important for the lake. So, with that, before we get into the projects that we've had on the list for probably about a year now, the number-one question that's come about since maybe we passed the rule in, I believe, July for the docks, we made the communication for docks, that's gonna mean for seawalls as well. The question is, you know, why? Why now? Well, two reasons as to the why. Three years ago, we established the Lake Committee. We had a survey done, independent survey done, and a study done in 2019, the condition of our lake. In the lake, that, that survey highlighted areas where we need to start focusing in our lake. Clarity, fish population, shore erosion, things of that nature. So, out of that study, we established the Lake Committee. The Lake Committee has been meeting since 2020, and they've been coming up with these plans, projects in conjunction with the, with the board, myself. And as we started to do that, it started to shed more light on, listen, some of the things that we've been doing in the past hasn't been to state code, hasn't been to the requirements of Sandy Pines. And because of that, it's impacting our shoreline, and it's impacting our lake. So, so that's the why. Another why as to, hey, why are we getting these state requirements? You know, we've been working in conjunction with Eagle. A lot of people are going, who the heck is Eagle? Right? Eagle is the Environmental, Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. Used to be N-D-N-R. So, and I think they're going through another, I think they're going through another rebranding as well, so they might, they might change their, their name again. But Eagle is the one that we have to file permits for, members file permits for, things of that nature as work gets done. The next thing is, hey, why, why are they, why are they coming out? Why are they coming out to see Sandy Pines? Two reasons. One, in 2020 through COVID, it was a hard time getting, getting people to come out and actually take a look at the condition of our lake. There now, the state, state agencies are starting to come out and visit places like Sandy Pines. And now that they're doing that, we have to make certain that we're following the rules and the requirements and the regulations to avoid any fines. You know, to give you an example, one of the conversations that we had, I think many of you know, if you don't, one of the main projects that we've been working on is the dam project. That's without the "N." Soon to be adding with an "N." The dam project is, every three years, if you're not aware, our dam gets reviewed, and it either passes a certification or doesn't pass certification by the county. So, 2019, it passed with a B rating, meaning, you know, the old school, A, B, C, D, E, F, that's how it's graded. We're sitting at a B rating in 2019. That's good. 2022, last year, they came out, we got a B rating again. We're sitting there, it's pretty good. But each one of these come, each one of these inspections and certifications comes up with recommendations on how you can improve the dam. As we go through that, we generate a plan to say, you look at our dam, it's got concrete on it, that's a flat surface. If anybody looks at those, the waves around our lake or up, up against the dam, as waves come up, it's hitting a wall and it's just shooting with even more energy and force down until that wall is no longer there. And then it hits something, and then it starts to ruin the sand or the beach or wherever that's going. Our plan is to improve that, and we put a plan together, put what's called riprap around that. So, if any of you go to Saguaro, Grand Haven, Holland, go down the pier, riprap is the large white limestone rocks or sandstone rocks that they use. So, instead of a flat surface, we have waves that come and they hit all of these other surfaces, and it dissipates that area. That's a plan. We presented that. In order to get that plan approved, Eagle, DDQ, the state, the state agencies had to come up and look at our lake. That happened in January. When they looked at our lake, they noticed, look, hey, this is January 27. Why we have docks in the lake? If you don't know, Sandy Pines is obviously a private entity, a private recreational community. However, whether this is, again, a dammed lake or not, this is still a lake, and it's a state lake. So, we have to abide by state requirements. As they came out and they took a look, look at our dam, and then went into Phase 3 and talked about dredging and things, things of that nature, they noticed, it's January 27, why we have docks in there? We need permits for those. Okay, well, members need to fill out those permits. The Sandy Pines process at the time was, you fill out your own permits, Sandy Pines owns the property, you gotta get authorization from Sandy Pines Operations, and then go fill out your own properties. So, guess what they did? They went and started polling any, they have geomaps, right? They started looking at Sandy Pines and how many permits were actually polled for docks? How many permits were actually polled for seawalls? They went back six years. Not a lot. So, this is kind of where we're at with, and, you know, I see some of the faces in the audience, well, you know, hey, I bought, I bought it like this. So, these are some of the things that we are trying to work through right now. And we're trying to give you guys as much information as quickly as possible as to the states coming out, and they need to make certain that anything that's touching that water in the shoreline meets their requirements. If not, we get fined. So, this isn't a, I've seen some of the comments on Facebook and places like that, hey, this is revenue generation, and, and, you know, Sandy Pines is just trying to, you know, nickel and dime us. This is absolutely not the case. I'm, I'm the first one to stand up for you guys, and I, I have other things to do than talk to Eagle on a regular basis. I've talked to the Dam Safety Task Force on a regular basis. But they are now starting to come out and put boots on the ground, and we just need to be prepared. And we need to make certain that every site has the, their ducks in a row. If you've got anything touching that lake or touching that shoreline. So, the Lake Committee is trying to gather that information, come up with plans, and then get a communication over to you guys. So, I've already highlighted one of the projects that we talked about, which was the dam. That one is still in progress. Because of all the, the issues with, did anybody see a couple of years ago Midland, Michigan, with that dam breaking? And there's a couple other dams in the state of Michigan that's had some challenges? That one is still pending because they're, they're scrutinizing dams in the state of Michigan now. It's really getting challenging to try and, try and get stuff approved to where they expect this, the requirements, the structure, and anything that's touching the dam right now. So, that's project number one. Project number two that we had out there was, we were trying to do some additional wells to help with clarity, water level in the lake. The first one that we tried was in Phase 3. We communicated this at the beginning of the season. The Phase 3 well didn't work out. All the geomaps, everything that we looked at with our well provider, thought we would get a pretty decent flow, oh, you know, 500,000 gallons?
Per minute.
Per minute.
50,000.
I'm, 50, yeah, it's five.
Five hundred gallons per minute, and we ended up with 48.
Yeah, 500, and we ended up with 48. So, that's, you know, we're expecting fire holes, we gotcha. So, we're, we're pivoting on that one, rebooting, trying to figure out how to get more fresh water in the lake, which helps with clarity, which helps with the, the environment for the fish. And now we gotta take a look at other areas in the lake for that. So, that's project number two. Project number three was, Riprap by the Chapel. We're looking at, anybody see that, that point at Chapel? Trees are falling in. We've got another, in Phase 2, we've got a point there where this summer or this season, straight winds came down, Mac Trion, we've got some erosion around that point as well. So, those are the ones that we've highlighted, that we're trying to give plans and take the money that we have from operations and capital in, for lack of better terms, shore of, our shoreline, to stop the erosion. We haven't had a, I'm not gonna lie, we haven't had a good year with some of those projects. It's been, it's been challenging. And then, towards the end of the season, in July, we were told we have to have a process for the docks. So, we communicated that, I wanna say at the end of, end of August, beginning of this month, here's the communication. If you have a dock that is going in the lake, and you want that, you believe it needs to be permanent year-round, you have to file a permit. And there's two permits. We passed a rule in July, August timeframe, there's two permits. You need a Sandy Pines permit, and then an Eagle permit. You need two permits. Number one, the state has come to us and said, not only have you not had a lot of people put permits out for docks and seawalls based on their information that they had in their database, the ones that they do have recently have not been good. So, we, we agreed with the state that to try and help expedite the process for our members, we will be the point person. So, you need a Sandy Pines permit, and we use the docks as an example. You fill out a dock permit, you turn it into Member Service, or you turn it into the Park Inspector's office at Jeff's office. That gets you on a list. We have about 30-ish, 34 people that are asking for a dock permit to leave their dock in year-round. The commitment that we have from Jim and Jeff is, by the end of this week, we are gonna try and meet with each one of those members on that list and do an assessment of your dock and your request for a permit. What's in that assessment? So, part of the communication that we put out was, there's a checklist. Alright, number one, Jeff's gonna take his GPS, and he's gonna put your coordinates in, your boat stake coordinates in, make sure it's in the right spot. Kind of crazy, but throughout the year, we've seen, hey, some boat sticks are five, 10, 12 feet off because they've been, they've been moved or, or whatever, but they've been off. Check box number one, it's gotta be in the right spot. If it's not in the right spot, your, your permit isn't gonna get approved. Your boat stake's gotta get moved in the right spot, so does your dock. If it's in the right spot, then we have, we have Jim taking a look at your dock. He's got a list because he's been our point person for Eagle. Jim, Jim and I touch base probably too much, but we touch base on a regular basis, and he's in contact with Eagle. So, he's got, he's got a list of, he's gonna assess your dock, and he's gonna determine whether your dock is, hey, there's a high probability that this is gonna get approved, we'll go ahead and process the paperwork, or we don't believe this is gonna get, we don't believe this is gonna get approved, and here's why. We wanna give that communication to you right now, real time, in person, because the other option is, you know what? Just fill out the dock permit, Jim will put your site number out there, take some pictures, you'll get charged 200 bucks for the, both, both the permits together, and then you come back and find out it's not approved. So, that's not, that's not real, real good customer service, and that's not, that's just wrong. So, we're, we're trying to get in front of this and tell you, here's what you need to do in order to get this approved, if it would get approved at all. So, we're trying to give you that real-time, honest assessment. That's the process we got going on with the docks. 34 on the list now. We're gonna give you the information immediately by the end of this week. And then, if, if Jim and Jeff assess it, we'll process both permits, and then we have a direct line into Eagle, we're trying to get those approved as quickly as possible.
And there's no charge for that.
And, and so, yeah, so, good point. So, to Jeff's point, the 34 people, I'm gonna say the majority of them have put a permit in front of Jeff. When they come out and do the assessment, we're not gonna charge you for that permit unless the next step is, yep, you're good, and we're gonna go forward. If, if it comes back to them and they say, you know what, this is not gonna work out, and we don't think you're gonna get approved, it's gonna be really up to the members and say, well, you know what, I don't think you know what you're talking about, process both of them, and I think, I think you're wrong. Then we'll process them on your request. But we're gonna tell you thumbs up or thumbs down, and if it's thumbs down and you walk away, we're not gonna charge you for that time and that permit. Okay? So, the other thing that, again, for those of you, so there's 34 applicants here that are asking for, for a permanent dock. I don't know how many, how many do we have to estimate, you know, 500, 600 docks-ish, if not more? So, that means the rest of you are saying, we're gonna, we're gonna pull this out. We do, we do it every year, we're gonna pull this out. The rules state you can't store your docks and stuff along the shoreline or in green space. We've made the communication for this year because we're backed up against timing at the end of the season. Anybody that is not going through that permit process and is pulling their docks out, we're going through the, for this year only, pull your docks out, get it as far away from the shoreline as possible, put it parallel to any retaining walls. If you can, pull it up into your own site area. If not, you can leave it on the shoreline as far away from the shore as possible, because we are gonna get some visits during the off-season. Maintenance may have some projects, and we need to have a clear path to that, to the lake and the shore. So, you can pull that as far up as possible, leave it there this year. During the off-season, we're gonna continue to work on, okay, we're reactive right now in 2023. How we be proactive in 2024 with, is, are we gonna allow the storage on a regular basis? If so, what's the timeframe, things of that nature? So, right now, we're, we're a little bit reactive because of the timing that we've gotten from, from Eagle. So, am I missing anything?
I think so.
Okay. So, that's kind of where we're at. Shoreline, any shoreline work that you guys want done, seawalls. I've seen many things that have also been communicated that, hey, well, I'm gonna wait until the lake's really, really low, and then I'm gonna put in my own seawall. One, I still need Eagle permit for that. And two, it doesn't matter how low that lake is, because what Eagle is looking for is the high-water mark. The high-water mark, our, our, our lake level will fluctuate up and down. Many people on the lake believe the actual water level of the lake should be at the top of the spillway. That should be the, that should be the standard depth of the level of the lake. That's incorrect. The actual baseline, the high-water mark of where the, the, what the lake should be is you go about 12 to 14 inches below the top of that spillway. So, right now, I would say, well, we're probably four to six inches below that right now.
Yes.
So, people say, holy cow, we're two feet below where we should be. No, we're actually about, you know, four to six inches below where we, where we need to be. So, any work that is done on seawalls, it's the high-water mark. A lot of members don't know that, which I get, I understand, we understand. A lot of the contractors that are out there may not understand that either. The agreement that we have with Eagle and the state is, any work that's being done on our shoreline has to go through the Park Inspector's office, and Jeff and Jim will be filling out the Eagle permits on behalf of the members. Jeff, every, every season in March, has a contractor meeting where we hold a contractor kind of roundtable here, and we highlight expectations for the upcoming year. This is item number one. Any contractor that is doing a seawall on any of our sites, and they don't have a permit, well, no law, excuse me, no law could be a contractor here at Sandy Pines, because some of the permits that we've seen that haven't been polled have been from a, from a contractor standpoint. So, wanna give them the benefit of the doubt, they might not have known that, but that's gonna be our process going forward. Okay? Am I missing anything?
Don't think so.
Okay. You wanna talk about this up here?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, I'll turn it over to Jim, and again, he's got our con, our point of contact for Eagle, so take it away.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Jim, is that my chip on?
I believe it's on.
Okay, cool.
Just don't talk about them, or enough, maybe.
Thank you.
I have people that would disagree with that. So, anyways, I just wanna let you guys know, everybody up here stays in the park. I'm a member. I'm not a paid employee. I am...
You're ready.
My wife told me.
If you had an item on one?
Okay. I'm only 62, I'm 89 or whatever. Anyways, I love this park. I met my wife out here. I learned waterski on a point down there when I was 14-years-old.
With an old F-tie.
F-tie boat with a Jalen 85. So, please don't kill the messenger. We are trying to do the right thing. My goal, because everyone has a goal when they get on a committee, everyone has a goal when they come to a meeting, my goal is that this park is here 50 more years for my grandchildren. And I hope everybody here can attest to that and wants that same thing for generations to come. So, if anyone talks about anybody's ideology, ideologically or whatever, or what they're doing this for, make it very clear, my goal is that this lake is still here 50 years. And we hope, Jeff told me early on when I came on board, he said, one of the things Jean told him was that, make this place better than it was when you showed up. That is my goal, that we get back to the basics of this lake, and that we make it what it is. The challenge with that is we do have to work with different government entities. And we did get, with all them coming out, like Jeff said, they came out, they gave us a lot of real hope, and then they took it away. However, that happened, it happened, and now we're dealing with it. But one of the big things that we're dealing with is, like a current movie that's out there, it doesn't matter until it's your child or your grandchild. And so, some of the stuff we're working on in some of these docks that are not up to par is, heaven forbid you're pulling on a tube one of your children or grandchildren, and a board with nails because of the dilapidated dock is floating upside down, and they rip their leg open or something even worse. So, everything we're doing is for the betterment of our entire park. Without the lake, I don't believe we have Sandy Pines, and all of our values go down. So, please, please, when we go through this stuff, we're not trying to be over policing everything, we just wanna make it better. So, a lot of people, I think Brian can attest to this, said on some of the internet, that where, where are they, where's this rule coming up? I talked to Christopher Guthrie, who is our contact at Eagle, who I've been working very close with today, and one of the things, he said, you need to let those people know, this is not a new rule, it's been existence for years, you just haven't been doing it. So, we didn't have a Lake Committee before, we didn't have a park manager that put this at the top of the list, because everything seemed to be coasting along just fine. Now that is changed, so that's what's going on. But if you read their paperwork here, a permit is required to install a permanent dock or boat hose. Anything that does not come out during the year is permanent. We, by the way, myself, do not recommend leaving them in. Ice and water are unbelievable, very, very bad things to deal with. But what happens is, if one board comes off that dock, if that dock has to be moved six inches, we've been informed by them because they have the old Google Eye, and they can see what we've done, if it moves even six inches, you need to pull another permit. If it gets damaged, you need to pull another permit. If you have to repair it, you need to pull another permit. Anytime something happens, another permit has to be pulled. So, it does not have to be pulled if you bring it in and bring it out. The other thing that Jeff tasked us with, he said, get options for our people. We need to give our members options, we need to let them know what's going on. We are diligently working, and we have a couple of contractors, and if any of you know any other contractor that can contact us and find out if they're willing to put docks in and take docks out, we would be willing to take a look at those people. Right now, the going rate is anywhere from 35 per section to 50 per section. There's a lot of companies that do this, and they do it a lot in the fall, obviously, taking out, and a lot in the spring. So, that is something that we're looking at and trying to get contractors so that you guys aren't overburdened with having to pull it out. There's a lot of elderly people. I don't enjoy pulling my dock out, but there's a lot of people that can't pull it out, that have plans to leave. So, again, Jeff tasked us with that, and we're working on it as quick as possible, trying to get those people. We have a couple lined up right now that we're hoping... We have a couple lined up right now that we're hoping, if some of these permits don't get applied for, we'll be able to give that information to you on an individual basis. So that's another thing. Um, other than that, guys, we are all members. We are trying to work for you and trying to beautify our park and make sure it's here for a much longer period of time. We're gonna hopefully have another one of these lake committee meetings to talk about the seawalls and other things, but right now, it's imperative that we talk about the docks because of the timeframe that we're stuck into. So at this point, anything else? Okay?
Thank you. So I think, uh, apologize, it took a little bit longer than I, I anticipated, but so, what questions do you have? Um, we're looking at, give us some feedback on what you think the condition of the lake is, some other projects. You know, we touched briefly about dredging in phase three at the last, at the last, uh, board meeting. We kind of highlighted some of the projects already. If, if you wanna just, can you come up to the, we got a mic, uh, how?
Oh, I think I have this people on there. The question is, you talked about the riprap, so what's kind of the timing on that now? Do you have an update on, is it gonna be next year? What, what's kind of the timing on that?
We, we don't, so if you didn't hear that, the, the question was, what's the timing on the riprap for the dam? Uh, we don't have timing on that because right now, we've submitted, uh, to Joe's point, we've submitted probably four different plans that we, we thought were doable and they, they haven't come back approved yet. So those are the conversations we're having with the state during the off-season is, what, what do you want done? And in full transparency, when we first started this project, you know, it started out at about eighty-five thousand dollars and the board and the lake committee is like, yeah, that's not, we can support that. Then changes, okay? We call them change orders in automotive or I feel like, right? Change order, uh, well, we wanted to do this and now we went from eighty-five to about a hundred and ten thousand. And then now we wanted to do this. So I'm not even gonna tell you what it's at right now because it's well off the reservation as far as...
We need to know.
What we...
We need to know.
So I don't have, I don't have firm numbers, but you're looking at, you know, north of two to three hundred thousand is what they're looking at based on the recommendations and the requirements that they want us to put on our dam. Um, and we're telling them, we just, we just, we don't have the money for that, it's not the budget. So we're trying to continue to work with them. Long answer to, we don't, we don't have a time for that. So continues to change.
Yes.
Uh, talking about the, uh, the docks, Sandy Pines docks, say it all later.
Those had an original permit pulled on them when they were first put in.
So if, if, if you would go with the private sector of the park, if they would go with a barrel dock like, a floating dock like you have, would that be a better chance of going through for them than it would be if they had a stake with wooden dock? Because you got your permit okay and they stay out there all the time. So what, what, what's gonna be the difference between a yes and a no, I guess?
Can I answer that? Yeah. Thank you. So when we go for personal individual docks, there's limitations, four foot wide by maximum of thirty foot from high water mark. When you go for a commercial dock, the application process is totally different. The park put that application and got those approved for those barrel docks. So two, thank you for the question, but two totally different applications and each one of those had to have their own individual permit. Now on the lake shore, each one of our docks have to have their own individual permit. We have to go back, so we're duplicating the paperwork and going back right from the beginning and trying to do copy and paste and stuff. But we're hoping that once we get the first one with one point person, with Jeff and I working with the state of, of Christopher, that once we get one approved, we can just duplicate that and go boom, boom, boom. Speed up the timeframes, which is what the state wants, because so far, a lot of the paperwork from different people has been all mixed up. Just think, if you had to do it for the first time all by yourself, what the different paperwork you have to fill out is just unbelievable. Once we have it done, it keeps going, so totally different dock, thank you.
And I have one other.
Sure.
I've been fishing this lake for probably twelve years and these barriers along the lake shore, like you said, the one by the chapel, that's been at least thirty-five feet of sand that's filled in this lake. And in twelve years, where I used to fish, it's gone from three feet to four feet shallower.
Yep, yep.
So if you're looking in twelve years, another three feet without putting any barriers around these corners, you're gonna talk about a lake that you won't even be able to run a boat in. And if that's, it's, and I'm not kidding.
And what I can say too is, as the inspector going out with my GPS and locating boat stakes, so the GPS coordinates that I have were put into effect around two thousand and four, somewhere in there, two thousand and three. Most of the time, I can go out there and my GPS coordinated to that exact boat stake in two thousand and three, when it was put there, was about six to eight feet up on shore. But now I can go there, put that same GPS state and it might be four feet into the water.
Yeah, I was saying that, that even, you know, a lot of places, the water still looks like it's where it should be. But even, you know, you, you got your, your graph and stuff on and it's three and a half, four foot shallower where I'm fishing now is nine feet, where before it was somewhere in there, I think a fifteen feet. And that's in that, in the low lake area. And that's twelve, that's only twelve years. So if we continually left those banks and, and along the chapel on that sand wall, you watch a good rainstorm here and you, you drive a boat along there or you walk along there, you see two to three foot runoff that's running into the lake. And, uh, it, it's sneaking up from the inside of the lake coming up where it looks nice from the outside, but as you're grappling it, you're, you're losing a lot of water.
And, and you're, I mean, you're spot on. I mean, we've, we've talked about phase three, right? Phase three where, not, I don't think a lot of people know, phase three, now, if you go all the way back into phase three or that, that, we call it the little channel now, that little channel, there used to be boat, uh, boat stakes that mattered. That is the mouth and that is, that is the artery of water that comes in and fills this lake here. It starts way at the end of phase three if it comes in. And that continues to get filled in and filled in every year. Almost the point of, um, you know, it start to close off. So a lot of people are saying, hey, dredge it, dredge the lake, you know, because it's filling in. Uh, we need to make it deeper, we need to dredge the lake. Not a bad idea, but if you start with the, let's dredge the lake and you don't address those points and you don't address the shoreline, it's gonna continue to fill in. So that's what this lake committee is trying to do.
Even by the island over there where they had, they had, I think it was the spring or maybe even last spring, they had four foot drop-offs where that sand was just falling in. And even, even almost from the island out to that shoreline or that beach area is, I guess that's a beach over there. It's just, you know, you're, you're losing feet, you know?
We are.
And I answer, you're losing feet.
We are. So, uh, okay, Jim. So again, the plan is, we're, we need to take in this input and dredging is on the list, we've talked about that. Don't know what that's gonna cost, but you dredge now, you're not fixing the actual problem of, you're gonna dig a hole, do it at the beach, go do it at the beach with your kids. You dig a hole right by that shoreline, a wave comes in, pulls all that sand back in the hole. Oh, crap, we gotta do it. You gotta, we gotta fix the shoreline to stop the sand from going into the lake.
You only need a dock if you don't fix the shoreline.
Agreed.
Dave, we get...
No, I was just gonna say, we have this problem over there, we've got problems back in three. Has there been any talk about doing a lake dredge study? So you can pinpoint these problem areas in the lake. You know, I've done studies on my own in the back and there's two sw- two deep areas there that are filled in with mud that you know.
Yep.
My water level's only about, well, now only about six inches on the end of my dock. But I don't know if there's been any talk about an actual study.
There has not been a talk about a, a lake dredging study. Um, and again, what we, what we did last, what we did this January was, we did bring, we did bring the, the state agencies out there. We talked about the dams and then we went back there and we did talk about dredging that area. We haven't actually put a study together yet. So that's something that we can add to the list and, and start, start looking at.
One more question.
Sure.
When they do this study, can they break it up into areas, say phase three, sailboat cove? Um, phase six, that channel coming into sailboat cove, down there on the end of that? And not necessarily talk about dredging the entire lake at a cost of three million dollars to where we've gotta throw lots of money at it or talk about throwing lots of money at it to get it done? Maybe we can do this in pieces. Fix the, um, the riprap where these problem areas are first, get that taken care of. Then start tackling the areas that are, they're causing problems in the lake where the lower water quality is. We've gotta be sending some really bad water to the rest of the lake from back in phase three.
Right. No, and that, that's, that's a great point. We, we need an all-encompassing strategy for the lake. We, the lake committee has done a good job with identifying these specific projects and then trying to work with Eagle and the other state, uh, agencies to get some of these implemented. But we need an all-encompassing. We started with that study in twenty nineteen. We need something that'll go a little better than that. So, yes.
What I hear is the longer we wait, the worse all of these problems get. And I hear money issues and there's what, two thousand four hundred lots here? Shouldn't we be looking at an assessment to say the lake, if it's our first asset?
Great, great point. Great, great point. I, I, I mean, quite honestly, um, yeah, I mean, but in order to do that, so, I'm thinking from an operational side and, you know, from a member's side as well. We gotta, we gotta walk both of those, those walks. I love hearing you say, hey, an assessment, I heard the collective, oh, in the audience, right? But, um, in, in order, in order to come, in order to come to the membership with, hey, here's what's going on with the lake, here's a proposal for an assessment that gets voted on. What's the plan and how much is it gonna cost? Right? That's, that's what we gotta do, right? So, well, and, and again, so we took that plan from twenty nineteen and we're, we're identifying those areas from twenty nineteen. But that plan was specific with clarity, um, you know, the fish population, some minor shoreline erosion, the dam popped up. Back to Dave's point, this needs to be a, a larger study, all encompassing of where are the hotspots on the shoreline? Uh, what, what needs to be done along the shoreline? And then once the shoreline is done, then what the, the dredging, how long, how long's that gonna take? What are the hotspots in those areas? Where are we gonna dredge first? We gonna dredge phase three? We gonna, so that kind of study wasn't done in twenty nineteen. And this committee is saying, that's kind of, kind of where we're at. We got individual projects, but we wanna hear from you guys to start putting the overall strategy together.
Would it done?
Where can we find that study? So that we have, are communicating ourselves, if we're trying to come up with ideas.
So we can repost that study, that study was out there, um, I wanna say, we took it down in twenty twenty-one, I think when we redid the website. Uh, but we could put the twenty nineteen study back up there. Um, I'll talk to Dan, who's in the back and we'll, we'll get that put up as soon as possible. Diane?
A few, uh, last year, we started paying a hundred dollars per boat stake. And I was under the understanding that that money was being, going to go towards the lake. When you guys talked about, you know, that we're gonna use this hundred dollars per boat stake, it's gonna go to improving the lake. And I don't know how many boat states we have. Any idea?
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred, so that's a hundred thirty thousand dollars.
About two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year according to the financial reports for two years. So where did that money go? I think it should have.
So, go ahead and finish and I'll answer both of you.
Well, I think yes, kind of, yeah, so I'm just saying, you know, yeah, we need money to do this, but that was my understanding that that was gonna be used for that. My second question, we'll get to his answer, but my second question is, we put these rocks in, which, great idea, but when I see them in Grand Haven or whatever, they're kind of wide. What about all these kids who fish on the dam? Are they still gonna be able to do that? Because I want them to be able to do that yet.
So part, yes, the short answer is yes. Part of our plan is, here's what this is gonna look like. We're gonna have some, what we call landing spots where you can still fish. We're gonna put our benches back. So yes, we're gonna make it still people, people friendly. So to answer this question as to, hey, what happened to the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? There's two things we're talking about. So when we did the boat stakes, the boat stakes at seventy-five bucks per boat stake, that was operational cost. And the operational cost went through the roof because we were turning on our pumps twenty-four, seven because we needed to keep our lake level at a high level. That's operational cost. So you got two things going on. Operational cost, which the boat stakes are paying for, those have increased. The other thing that we're talking about, this whole conversation right now, is called capital. And that's, that's not a boat state, that's our capital budget. So these are, these are assets that we're adding to the lake that's in no budget anyway. And that's back to this young lady's point of, all right, hey, then are we talking about an assessment?
So, yeah. So it, it says that there is from, you know, June of twenty-one, it says it was supposed to be for lake development income. And if it wasn't utilized in a year, then it was to go to capital. So I'm asking, you know, wasn't the lake committee supposed to sit there and come up with projects to use that money to get us to our goal of sitting there taking care of this lake long-term?
And the answer is yes, and we highlighted those projects. Dam project was number one. That money's still there on hold because it hasn't been approved. Phase three well, we spent the money to, to have that well drilled, put it in, it didn't work. We got some, some of that money back because it didn't work. Um, dredging is on hold because when we walked those agencies through in phase threes, they didn't approve our plan and they said, you need to focus on the dam first. So some of that money is still on those projects. But again, if you're, if you're looking at, if you're looking at the boat state fees, we were, we're clear when we passed those boat state fees that if you looked at the electrical bills that were being assessed for each one of, assigned each one of those pumps that were running the lake through, um, to keep the level up, those, those, uh, electric increases were going through the roof. So the majority of that is going through operations to fund the electrical.
So, so what you're saying is, is that money still sits there in lake development and you will not go into capital movement to use for other things than the lake?
Again, yes. So where we're at on our capital budget is, we outlined with the finance committee and the board, there's specific line items. And the dam project has a line item of the dollar amount. The phase three wells have a line item of the dollar amount. Now what we can do is, if we're not hitting those projects, um, I'll throw a scenario out to you right now on the dam that, uh, you know, we may or may not talk about next week with the board. We got a B-rating on our dam, okay? We could say, forget this, we got a B-rating on our dam, we're gonna leave it as this. We're gonna take that money and go do it at the point, in chapel, uh, chapel point. We're gonna take that money, we're gonna go do a different project on the lake somewhere else. We, we could do that. Is that the right thing to do? Do we wanna address the dam or do we wanna address those points? So the money is still there for those identified, uh, lake development projects, yes? Yes, in the back.
A few things, I, I guess I'm kind of curious why just the docks are paying for operational costs of the lake. I mean, my, my family doesn't use this facility, but yet our dues pay for the operation of this or, or the golf course or whatever other assessment's going on. Everybody benefits from this lake, whether they have a dock in that lake or not. So it seems a little short-sighted to say, you thirteen hundred people are gonna put this bill. That's number one. Number two, I, I completely disagree with naming more studies of this lake. Studies breed, more studies, which breed more discussion, which breeds inaction. It's been four years since three, four, and here we are talking about the things that we're talking about four years later. If we have another study, we push that back again, we push that back again. The, the more, the more experts that are involved tends to make things worse. That's my own experience. Same thing with Eagle, the more they're involved, the more they screw it up. But that's a hindsight conversation for a while. So I, I would say we need action more than we need studies. Example, we're talking about phase three being almost choked off from the inlet end. Well, if we can take care of dredging in phase three, well, that helps with the water situation that we're talking about. well, that helps with the water situation that we're talking about with a pump that's short of its water pressure. Two birds, one stone. Those are things we can see, just as practical people, we can go, this is going to help us. We've got shoreline caving in. I don't need an expert to tell me we should fix that shoreline. And I, I, I have a feeling that, that people involved in that Board can see the same thing without just doing study after study. Lastly, the dock situation. Here's where I'm confused. So I, I get a boat stake and there's a dock there. There's nobody else around me. So I, I fix this dock and I get it all working. And within a month of getting a dock into decent shape, suddenly there's somebody else, I guess, the boat stake next to me. And they tear out my dock and they put in a new dock. One that's floating and does all sorts of goofy things. Now frankly, I don't care whatever dock's dock, but I have to utilize his dock. It's not mine, but by our own rules, I have to allow him to have it there. So I'm certainly not going to take this dock out. It's not mine. What kind of liability do I have if I do try to take this dock out and I wreck it? But yet I get a fine because there's a dock in my stake, of which is a dock that I don't even want here. How do we work through that? Nor do I want to have to deal with the individual who's on the other side of the dock. I've met him twice. I frankly don't care for him. That's the only thing. I don't care, but for me to get a fine over some guy's dock that I don't want, nor like, I can take an excavator down there and shove it four docks down for all that care. And how are we going to deal with that situation? How do, how do I work with this? I don't want to talk to that guy and it's not my problem.
Okay, so you said a lot there. Take a breath. Um, and, and try to unpack that. Um, I want to, one of the things that, as you were speaking, um, just, my spiky senses went up, right? There's, there's two things that I think is going on. You say inaction, and what we're looking at is inaction because the projects aren't taking place. I challenge you on that. You're right to an extent, the projects aren't taking place. But the Lake Committee and the Operations Group have done a lot of act-
Fair assessment, a fair assessment, not, not questioning.
Yep, so let me finish. So, and I, thank you for, for not, uh, not questioning that. But the point I want to make is, we are doing a lot of work and we're presenting plan after plan after plan to the Alphabet Sue group that you were talking about. And we, we just aren't getting approvals. So we have to go back and resemit plans. We talked about dredging in Phase Three in January. We had Ben from Maintenance, we had Lake Committee there, we had the Park Inspector, I was there. We had DEU, DNR, Eagle, Allagren County. And basically they said, yeah, good luck getting a dredging permit. That was their response. We, we, we laid out two or three ideas on how we wanted to attack it down that channel in Phase Three. So the proof is in the pudding, right? The proof in the pudding is, hey, are these projects getting done on our lake or not? You guys are saying, no, they're not getting done. We're trying our darndest to get them done. And that's why we're helpful in the Lake Committee or Lake Town Hall here to get that in front of you guys to say, we're trying and we're trying to push these things over. Um, if you have a dock problem, I would recommend that you go see either the Park Inspector or myself to help resolve that situation. Number one, if you had a dock there, so I'm assuming you're sharing the boat stake. One, one's on the right, one's on the left?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you already had a dock there and all of a sudden it got reassigned or this guy decides, hey, I want to put my floating dock there. Um, he rips up yours. I would be coming right away saying, hey, what, what's going on? Um, so we can help try and resolve that. But fines, permits, things of that nature, whoever owns the dock is going to be the one that's responsible for the fine and the permits. So if you're sharing the floating dock, even though you don't like each other, but it's his dock, you're not going to get fined.
Okay, fair enough. I don't care that it's for my dock, his dock's basically my dock. But whatever, it's his, right?
Did you want to add anything on that? Go ahead.
Sorry.
Jeff's not going to give me the mic after this, but.
Jeff, run the mic in that room. Okay, so I'm just going to take about 10 minutes to explain something very quickly for Domino. So again, that fact that, that, and I do not take it wrong that we've not been doing anything and I've not been doing anything for free! As a member, we have room on the committee if you want to come and, and put your time in for free. So when we looked at the domino effect of our lake is, yes, we can't dredge until we get the water from coming in. We've had many, many meetings with many different specialists. Our very first specialist came in and said, if we don't keep the water high, we are going to undermine our hardened edge by dropping the water down as far as we do. So we went towards wells. We paid for a well that we got a big discount on because it didn't produce what it was supposed to. After we talked to Allagren County and got all the permits and did everything the way we were supposed to. So our first thing is, what are we going to do about wells? What are we going to do to get up to stay to that hardened edge? We need to stay to that hardened edge. Every time you let the water drop down and this edge is all hardened, the new waves come underneath and undercut it and that drops in. So does everybody understand that from a domino effect? Okay, thank you. So we need to pass this around with the rest of the members. So what does that look like? That looks like at 8:30 at night, nobody goes fast, but yet people do. When, and then we call security and security doesn't have enough time. We need to self-police, we're protecting our lake. Keep those people down. If anyone's putting four foot waves up, why did we cancel my mastercraft and all surfing boats? Because those waves undercut our shore and you can't have 16 people controlling us as hostage for the other 2,200 that own lake front. We need to be able to self-police and tell people, you can't do that on our lake. We care about it. We need everybody here as members. So we need to get that watermark up and we need to stop the after hours and before hours running these boats so fast. We need to go down. The definition of no wait is not 10 miles an hour. It's whatever is needed just to move the boat, to propel it forward, period. So if you see anybody out there, please kick in. Blow your horn, do something. Hey, guys, it's no wait right now. We need to protect our lake. That also raises up the phosphorus and it raises up everything that's on the bottom of our now very shallow lake, which now causes LJ blooms, which now causes warmer water, which now causes evaporation, which means the lake goes down faster. Do you see the cycle? We need to join together and help protect our lake with all these rules. Yes?
So you said that in the back of Gene's theory, he used to say, see something, say something.
Yes!
I've done that repeatedly. I see somebody get on the lake early or stay on the lake late. Nothing is done. Security comes out there, slap on the damn wrist, don't do it again. It was just cleaning us, cleaning carbon out of this cover. You do that seven o'clock in the morning?
Right.
So you got to stop, start doing something about it. Don't just slap on the wrist, don't do it again. Do something about it.
That's exactly right.
Whatever, whatever. It's like these guys that's got these 26 foot pontoons with 350 horse motors on.
Yep.
For about 50 miles an hour, that, something's going to be done.
Yes. So what he just said right there is, when we met the Eagle and the DEU, what they said to us is, when we went back there, number one, they said, you're trying to do all these projects. It's a major project. We now might have to call the EPA. We don't want them here, folks. We don't want any federal government. So we have to bite off a little bit at a time to be able to get our projects done so we can't make them too major to call in the next, and the next people. Yes?
I, I just need clarification about the opening of the river and the well. Um, I, I don't understand, um, I thought that river fed the lake.
That Pigeon Creek feeds the lake.
Okay, so, so, um, then if the well, um, failed, then wouldn't one of the projects need to open that river, um, mouth first to feed the lake? And then additionally, I, we live on a ri, a river elsewhere.
Yes.
And if, if the lake start, if Phase Three starts turning into a wetlands because we're, of the timing.
Yes.
They, it's my understanding, they don't allow you to turn it back.
Exactly.
So that's why I'm so concerned about the timing because you go in there and you see the lily pads and you see it get shallower and shallower. I'm wondering, should we be also hiring consultants instead of another study to help with the process of these permits that keep being rejected?
Okay.
There's a, there must be a reason why they're being rejected. And is Eagle sharing why they are being rejected and helping us in any way to get those permits the way they, or get the application the way it needs to be so it'll get approved?
Perfect, thank you very much. So when we met with them back there, they said, what are you doing on your lake? We said, we're limiting the mastercrafts and the surf boats. They said, great, how are you enforcing it? Then they said, and I said, we're limiting the size of the runabouts and we're limiting the size of the pontoon boats. To that gentleman's, um, point over there, that's being looked at. Uh, and we're going to make sure that the boats are the right size because we have to prove to Eagle that we're enforcing our own rules. So we are doing that. We need to enforce the after hours slowing down so we're not washing away the shore. We also were told when we went back there, this is, how much soil has filled this up over the last 50 years since this is brand new? Because that is a drainage ditch, even though it says Pigeon Creek, we are part of, our entire lake is part of the Allagren County Drain Area. It's not really a lake. And they laughed and said, you'd never get a project like this approved today. So we know what's going on. We need to give them how much we filled up and that our drainage should take away this much to get us back to the original. We expect this much maintenance. We have to fill out report after report after report. But the main thing they said was, this is going to drain down all your other permits and cause them much, much more delays. So all of that was addressed. We were told what we have to do. Right now, we are trying to find what the original bathdometry is. There was a company that was going to come and say, your lake right now is this deep. It's going to cost like $15,000. If you have the original depth, we will digitally overlay it and we will put that report so you can use that. We can't find that. The fee to go through the muck and get a bathdometry of what it was down below and up above is like 10 times more. So we're trying to find some original paperwork from anybody that can give us that. So all of these things are being worked on. We are not sitting on our morals. We are doing absolutely everything we can to preserve this beautiful pristine place.
Where, where is Eagle right now? How come they're not here? And is there, is there a number or an address that we can have that we can maybe get a bunch of people writing and, and voicing our opinion to them instead of our Board?
Yeah. The Board and the Committee have been working tirelessly for the last three years. And it's unfortunate that we can't get some things done and talk about action plans. That's basically what we have. We can call it whatever word or verbage we want, but we basically have an action plan. This, this committee that was formed has done a hell of a job of giving us information of what we got to look at, what we need to do. The Board digested that and not only, you know, they, you know, we got to spend some money. But as the Board, remember, we look at, okay, what's it going to cost? How can we do it? What's the best plan to do it? And what's going to be beneficial for the members? And we do that. Do we, do we communicate all that? No, because no matter what we say, you know how it works. No matter what we say, 50% is going to agree, 50% is going to not agree. But we do have an action plan. We've directed and, and suggested to these three gentlemen of, of, of things that we look at in behalf of the members. So there is an action plan, or whatever you want to call it. But in order to get something done, you got to do this first. You know? The dredging, we know the dredging has to be done. We've talked about that for six years. We know it has to be done, but we keep getting roadblocks. That dam was going to be done in the spring. They've delayed it six different times because every time we do what they think we need to do, well, now you got to do this, and now you got to do this. So we're at the point now, I mean, we haven't totally discussed it, but like he said, we're going to be for 50 years. What are some other projects we need to get done? And done quickly that we can go another five years without the MVN looking at? You know, the shoreline over there, maybe we do the riprap. You know, the Board really looks at that and spends a lot of time trying to make the best decision for same time. And our members, and we're members too. We just ask you to be patient with us and, and, and we're doing, they're all doing. But this committee behind us, um, it's done one hell of a job of looking for our future. And now we just got to, you just got to give us some time and let us do what we need to do and, and it'll work out. The $70,000 for the stakes, you know, we watch that. That money is spent on the lake. Costs go up all the time. So it supplements and it goes in there and we can peel some of that out to save for the rainy day fund for when we need it. We're not, that money is, is, is being saved for when we have these to do. So, um, we ask you to, to bear with us. We did this Town Hall so we can give you more clarity so that you don't have to get bad information off, off Brian's page or off the other page. There, there's, there's, there's not a good member here that won't sit down and bend you and discuss it if you want us to. Our boards are always open. Um, Pat Mac there, our new board member, she's going to wonder in about three weeks why she ever did this job. But trust us, we, we have the best intent for all of us and, and we will get it done. You got, you got a good staff looking after you. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, you had one question?
I did. Actually, I just thought I wanted to thank you guys for all the hard work you do. Um, I've been out here 16 years. My husband grew up out here. His parents grew up out here before it was even a lake. That's how long he's been out with you. And honestly, at our home, we have a spring fed creek that goes to a pond with a dam. The dam doesn't leak. We don't have erosion. Granted, we don't have speedboats and all that. But it seems logical with all the marsh areas that can't even be mowed anymore, that the dam is leaking more than what anybody realizes. That's my number one. Number two, I heard it and I don't know if it's fact or myth, but are we keeping the bushes? Number two. Number three, if it's a private lake, why don't we control the speed limit?
It's not a priority.
It's a part of the case of.
It, it, it is a state, it is a state mandated, like, as the state.
So the state mandates the speed limit?
No, so the state mandates the lake and what we can do with the lake. We are a private entity, so we establish the rules on the lake. We could go at, at a state level, so if we want to set a rule, we can go at a state level or make it more stringent. We can't do a state, we can't do a, here's a state, um, and then go below the state requirement when it comes to be out of the water. Does that make sense?
Now, as far as the erosion goes, I noticed we got all these beautiful yellow buoys that are now more prevalent because we have them in the lake to preserve the shoreline. What are we going to do about the island? Are we going to put buoys around the island? So people have to go slower around there? Because, I don't know if you noticed, but in 16 years, we've lost a lot of that island. You know, we enjoy the fireworks that come off that island. People enjoy going out there and having a picnic or, you know, a social gathering. And I was just wondering if there was any talk of doing something to preserve the island that is part of the lake?
Yep, so let me try to, so question number one, um, dam is leaking, not accurate. So we've had the county out here looking at the dam and that's part of the, the evaluation of the dam when we go over three years. And we've also had an independent, uh, private hub, independent, independent, um, engineering firm come out. One of the other things that really hasn't been talked about is our lake and where we're at. One of the other things that really hasn't been talked about is our lake and where we're at. The runoff from the farmland in the surrounding areas is 10 times, 10 times the amount comes into our lake from the runoff from the farms and the other area here than a normal lake of this size. So we're dealing with that. So when we walk on the back there, and we find that it's, you know, feels a little squishy, that's runoff mainly. It's, we've had the dam looked at and there's no leaking of the dam. Now, we are going to have to address the tube that's in the dam. Again, that dam is 52 years old, so we're going to have to address that. But we've had an independent company come in, the dam's fine, it's not leaking. Number two, the bushes. Okay. Understand it's historical and, you know, I said, "I don't want to be the guy to rip up the bushes." But there's two different camps when you talk about those bushes. Anything on the backside of that dam, from a vegetation standpoint, helps secure and solidify it. So when you see around here, you see a bunch of the sand grass, you know, that helps solidify some of the sand dunes. You see regular grass seed, talked about again Phase 3 along some of the channel there. Do we plant grass seed there to hold that so it doesn't fall into the channel and close that up? So vegetation is good. Bushes aren't going to get touched. Then you have another company come out and say, "Bushes are bad." And here's why they're bad. Is because when you look at, when you look at grass vegetation, sand grass, things of that nature, it only goes down so far. The bushes, the shrubs, those root systems go down significantly farther and can impact the dam on the backside of the buoys. So we're not touching the bushes right now. There's two different camps and two different thoughts on that. I will be honest with you though, I've been here for two of those dam inspections. And Allee County has come out and said, because they're the ones that inspects the dam, "You got to come up and plant those bushes because we believe that that's eventually going to impact the dam." We haven't done anything with it yet. Okay. Island, that wasn't brought up at another board meeting, a different scenario. I think the first thing, one of the first things that we tried was, we had a picnic out there recently, maybe this summer. Yes, so nobody went to Goosebumps Island, right? So we tried a couple of things with some, I almost said chemicals, but some deterrents. And that appears to be working, where the geese are no longer landing on that. So one, clean it up. That's item number one. And I actually brought this up, a lady called, "Hey, North Shore is great for a wedding. We want to have a wedding on the island." And you don't want to have a wedding on the island. So we're going to try and clean that up. So clean it up, number one, and I don't disagree. I've got a picture in my office of anybody, any of you coming to my office. You walk into my office, you got a little campfire thing here, and then right on that wall is a picture from 70s with that island. It's like this. No trees, but it is massive. And now it's this little, so clean it up first and then, yeah, we got to figure out how to shore that up to stop erosion. Did I answer all of them? All right. So I know we're over about 15 minutes. Did you have one last question?
I have a couple of things that you brought up, so.
Okay, okay.
Number one, one of the things that we had talked about, who brought up the geese, something's got to be done.
I know.
You can't walk on the beach anymore. I remember thinking to my neighbor, saying, "I'm here."
So the island was a test, and it looks like that deterrent is working.
Okay.
So Steve DiArmond, at the beginning of the season, came up with, hey, here's some deterrents that members could use at their sites to try and get the geese away from there, you know, creating space out on the water even on your site. You know, a string, there's some sensors out there, you know, I kind of laughed at one of them. I think there was like, you know, an outline of a swan, and I saw like four geese right next to the swan hanging out. We tried this deterrent, it's working. We're trying to get some more of it, put it in the parking garden, and then the members can go by it and then spray it along their, it should work out, same to the corrections.
Yes.
Yeah. So you could spray it on the beach, and you could spray it on the grass, and it's deterrent, next one.
The other thing that I have has to do with the no-wake areas. For example, we're in Phase 6, all right? Some of those boats that are coming through there are going 40 miles an hour, easy or more, okay? Now, my biggest concern is there are a lot of kids that are in the water out there. One of these days, one of those kids are going to get hit, and there's going to be a major lawsuit over it. Because we have asked and passed for no-wake buoys to be put in that area. And we've never been, we've never been given the no-wake buoys, and something needs to be done. I've talked to Patty about this. She's patrolled out there, but unfortunately, it's not at the time when someone is out there going so fast. But I, just to share a little thing with you, my grandson was on our dock one day with two of his buddies, 12, 13 years old. All right? One of his boat came through and literally flipped those buoys right off that dock because he was going so fast. We've had our boats on tide out there because they're going so fast.
And that's inside of the Phase 6?
Inside Phase 6, yes. So I guess I'm bringing that up because something needs to be done. We've asked for years of the no-wake buoys and nothing.
So a couple of things. Yeah, so a couple of things. To that gentleman over there, thank you for continuing to call. We try to answer as many of those and get out there as quickly as possible. We, I think our membership understands we're at a constraint. It's very funny that Paul Skow, who is the public safety for Steve DiArmond, Paul and I will sit out there. You can tell when voters know, when Patty's there, and when she's not. So next year, we're coming up with a plan to try and change some of that. But see something, say something. We have had people bring in that information to us. What we're asking is, if you can, snap a picture of the MC numbers. Our new system that we have with our database for all of the members, we have the information. We just type in the MC number, it brings us to the member, the site, the contact information. We have a picture of you speeding. We have a picture of you at 7:00 in the morning in no-wake. And we've actually done that, and we've issued violations for them. Some of the pictures that we get, unfortunately, because the boats are going fast, those MC numbers aren't really legible. So we try to look for the description of those boats. Large boats on the lake. One of the charters, and we're just putting numbers on notice right now through the recording of this and this town hall, we are going in the audit of all boats. And I can tell you, we found three of them already in the last two weeks with, hey, here's what my registration says. We have a picture of the boat. We have a description of the boat. And huh, really weird, when we go to the manufacturer's specification, it's a 25.1-inch boat. You have 23/6 out of the registration. Those boats are, huh, we're not going to put up with them. So this is something that we're working on on a regular basis. It's taken a lot of work, but at the end of the day, we expect people to do the right thing and abide by the rules. And when you don't do that, in my eyes, what you're saying is, we don't give a crap about this lake. I give a crap about going fast and raising heck and doing whatever I want to do. So these rules are going to start being more stringent, starting in 2024.
I've said this for years, I don't understand why the state of Michigan doesn't require voter safety course to get a voter license. It's a weird thing to me. I took one years and years ago. It's amazing how much you learn. With this being a unique situation, have you guys ever considered requiring voters who get a boat permit and put their boat in the water here, require them to take voter safety course in order to operate a vessel in this lake? Because what she points out, I used to vote at Lake St. Clair a lot. The majority of the time when you see things like that, it's ignorance, they don't know any better. So many people buy a brand new boat, never bought a boat before. I've seen people buy $200,000 boats that have never operated a boat, put it in the lake, and go do really stupid stuff.
Right.
That endanger themselves and everybody else. Is that a possibility?
We could, yeah, we could take a look.
I don't know how it would be enforced or how it would be implemented, but.
That's going to be the challenge of this.
And then real quick, if the bushes ever do get taken out, I want to go on record, I have a neon green frisbee in the middle of the deed.
Again, this guy, and then this guy, and then we're over. I'm trying to be calm, everybody's time here because we're way over, so go ahead.
One of the worst places I think for erosion is on the channel. And we have a place on the channel, and because it's so downhill from our site, I'm afraid that we're going to eventually lose our patio and everything into the channel. Because I mean, the steps going down to our dock house are floating in midair at the bottom of the banks where it used to be angry. And there again, it's a problem with the no-wake zone not being up overage either. We get a lot of boats pulled out into the channel.
That's definitely going to be another issue that we have to address in the coming future for sure.
So Jim and Jeff, myself, and Steve DiArmond, I would say the people down the channel are probably sick and tired of the boats coming by snapping pictures. But that's probably one of the places Eagle's going to visit. And that's good news and that's bad news, right? Because we do see the docks down the Phase 2 channel. A lot of them are wood, and a lot of them are in not great shape. We've seen the erosion along Phase 2, where you've got your seawalls, some of them are falling in, they're washing under, you see trees. I'm not going to lie, I'm not really looking forward to having that conversation with Eagle on the Phase 2 channel. Because if any of you, I know some of you have docks that are on this permit list, I don't see those getting approved because of the state of the shoreline. And in any of the requirements, any of the requirements that Jim is probably going to go out and assess is if you're attached to it at the seawall or that shoreline there, is it just beach or do you have a wall? And if you have a wall, what's the condition of that wall? And if it's in poor condition, you're not going to get approved until you fix that wall. And fixing that wall means state requirements of riprap or these other things. Jim's got to check this. He can give you guys the good news on that. But that's, I don't disagree with you. The channel, I think, is going to be good news, bad news. It's going to be one of the first areas that I think Eagle is going to want us to.
So one more. I wanted to use sailboarders on the lake. And the violation of the 125 feet happens all the time. So one thing I stopped at the PSO office and said, hey, can you send out an email and put something in the footprint that says a reminder? You know, you could do that as an email. Reminder of the rules of the wake, speed, and all of that. So sometimes you have to beat it into somebody's head a bunch of times before they realize it. Because I have people that are very close, and it's dangerous. And I do appreciate the PSO officer, I know she's pulled people over for that violation. But some of that you may want to consider next year, just more communication.
Can we ask about what's being done for the quality of the water in the lake for fishing? What's being done for that? There's a lot of weeds being killed off that help improve the quality of the water, but we're killing the weeds. So what is the plan to approve the lake for fish?
So, so good question. A couple of things that we're going to want is, one, the clarity of the water, right? So the pumps churning and getting fresh water in there. We need to continue to make certain we're doing that. Two, there are specific areas where we're trying to manage with our spraying company PLM with, hey, these are weeds that are way over edge here, we've got to address this. But not hit some of these other areas for fish population. Where we see that, and this is one of our frustrating points, is that whole plan that we have for the dam and riprap and all that other stuff, that breeds an environment for fish. So put those landings there and have the little kids cast out there. Roger can take the little kids out there, teach them how to fish. And they're like, yeah, no, we want you to do this. So there are specific areas where some of these projects, I'll just talk about the Chapel Point. One of the project plans that we got from our contractors is take some of those old trees, dunk them in, and not only, you know, kind of stagger them, and not only does that help the water dissipate, turtles, fish, things of that nature, but we've been focused on this one project that we need to ship gears. The last thing, the easiest one we do, every year I get an email from Steve DiArmond, "Hey, I need you to approve this because we need to dump 2,500 more fish in the lake." And so every fall, the fish gets restocked. So those are some of the other things. One of, the last thing I talked about with fish is the Lake Committee is looking at a carp roundup, carp fishing contest is done in the spring. Carp will eat some of those eggs, right? So let's get rid of the garbage feeders on the bottom. One of the challenges we have is that if we pull, you know, 3,900 carp out of the lake, we need somebody's site designated to dump those fish.
Good fertilizer.
Maybe it'll keep the geese away. So you're welcome. One last question before we leave and get out of here. We're 28 minutes over. I apologize, this is a great conversation. This is feedback in line here. Thoughts on, I don't know if he is still here or not.
Here.
It's going to give in some more work, but thoughts on a lake survey this fall? Get it out to the members. What are some of the things that you want to see us improve on? Hey, listen, the capital aspect of, if we were to take a project and get a couple of consultants and contractors and highlight the areas around the lake that we need shoreline, we need dredging, I'm going to peel the band-aid off. Members willing to pay for an assessment on that. And it's not just the boat state guys that are, you know, on the lake here paying $75. It's the entire membership. It's our number one asset. Do we put a survey out there? I think it's a good idea, but I would appreciate some input. You know, email me. But I think we need to get a survey out there just to say, hey, would you entertain this? And what kind of other projects would you like to see? And then start taking that feedback as well. Because you guys have been great showing up here. But this is, this is an important population because you're here. But there's some of them that couldn't make it, some of them that don't know this is going on. So we sent out a mass survey, we could get everybody. Last question is back here.
What phrase would you be looking at if we had an arrangement for a sub?
I can't answer that, Karen. I mean, if we should start putting seawalls, dredging, things of that nature, I mean, I don't know.
You want to write a check for $125,000, we'll put it in the account.
All right. Hey, thank you for coming, sir. We took up some extra time.